Okay, we'll call the council time agenda to order Wednesday, March 27. We'll start with a roll call.
Counselor Young.
Here.
And Chair Medvedji.
Present.
And Counsel Marshall.
Here.
Counselor Bowerman. I see you. I think you're on mute.
I was, present.
Perfect, and I don't believe Counselor Belkot is here.
Yeah, she's unavailable at this meeting. All right, so item number two, any amendments to our current agenda?
I have no amendments.
Okay, we'll continue to move on then. We do allow for open public comment restricted to agenda items only. So is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak?
Yeah, my name is Carmen De Leon, and I'm talking about child abuse prevention. I know of a particular case where the children have talked about getting beaten with broomsticks, thrown up against the wall, and beaten to a pulp. And we took it to the judge, and she's still giving the benefit of the doubt to the accused party when they practically, all of the counselors have agreed that she has been abusing these children, and yet they still give her... Actually, the judge said it kind of threatening. He said, "If you don't watch it, I'm going to give her permanent visitations." And I'm like, "You're going to give a known abuser permanent visitations because this person's out of line?" No, children aren't a weapon. And you don't, you know, weaponize like, "I'm going to give her visits." Well, she was the one that was doing the abuse. I can name her. Her name is Patricia Luna. And she's abusing it, and it's all in the court documentation of all the abuse that's gone on. And they're still giving her the benefit of the doubt after two years of investigation. So here we are, even the children have talked about how they've been abused, and yet they're still giving her the benefit of the doubt without sending her to parenting classes, without doing a mental evaluation. I can give you her details, but I think it's up to the courts to really say, "Hey, this person is messed up as a parent," and cut them off, go to parenting classes, because we have too many parents who are ignorant and not being held responsible for raising children that are growing up to shoot everybody at school. And it's like, hey, what are they learning at home? Jeez, I just bought my kid a new video game where they kill everybody. So they're desensitizing them to murder. It's a game to them. And don't be surprised when everybody's getting shot up in schools. We need to hold the parents accountable, and we need to listen to these kids who are saying, "I'm being abused." And, you know, cut off these parents and mandate some education for these parents. And I don't mean giving these kids dope, doping them up. I've seen parents, "I give my kid ice cream and cookies and pop before dinner, and then they won't get to sleep. Let me give them a pill." No, that means you need to change their diet. Don't dope them up. You cannot give kids antipsychotic drugs when they're this big. You need to change their diet. You need to put them in activities, keep them using the energy so that they don't... I've already lost friends over, "Oh, my kid was hyper, so I gave him a pill." Those are pills for people, you know, you can't drug up a child. Their brain doesn't stop developing until they're 25. That's why I talked earlier about let people grow and make a decision. You can't, little kids who can't vote or drive, doping people up, it affects them for the rest of their lives. And you need to look twice at doping little children up for hyperactivity, ADHD drugs. No, no, no. ADHD, diet and exercise, not dope these kids up. And the same thing goes with what we talked about earlier, you know, let a person mature naturally and grow up. And then when you're thinking straight at 20, I think it's technically the age of 25 when the brain stops developing. So that's when you're... A teenager does not have...
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Parts of the brain.
Your time has expired. Did we have anyone else in the room that wished to make public comments? How about online?
Yes, I do have one person online. Caller, please go ahead and state your name and your comment.
This is Kimberly Gohean Elvin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. First of all, I want to state that I was at the library and made copies of all three, well, four of the proclamations. However, when I tapped on National County Government Month of April, it came back as a copy of the National Volunteer Week. I would like that straightened up. I want you to hold off on that because I want to read it, and there's no way I can read it. So I want you to set number 5.6 under New Business aside until another date. Or I would have spoken on it, such as, "We've passed the federal spending bill, and it's going to give millions and millions of dollars to Wuhan, China for more of their extensive use on all their little programs that they have." They released the COVID jab to depopulate the world, and it's made a chaotic mess out of it. And that's why I'm trying to wake up Clark County citizens to this. Speaking to child abuse, again, following criminal Biden, allowing first day, one, first day out, he opens up our sovereign borders, brings in child abuse more rampant than ever. There's nothing new under the sun. Children have always been abused. Everybody's been abused, blacks, whites, everybody in between. But it's been massive now. But that's what the evildoers want. They want all this chaos and all the evil reigns and stuff. It's almost biblical, isn't it? That at the end times, evil's going to take over for a little bit, but thank God, I wear his armor and I fear not. And so, you know, hurting people's feelings, this and that. But there's child abuse out there that you guys know about. You've brought it in, you've allowed it in. And frankly, really, you say you care, but I don't think so. I think the evil entities that, they go to bed at night and do not worship God are evildoers, and they love child abuse and all this chaos that's going on. As far as National Volunteer Week, God bless our volunteers. You know, I'm a volunteer. I do it for just that, for good, not evil. However, our local evil governments, corrupt governments, use volunteers while they stand over spending our hard-earned tax dollars telling volunteers what to do. So I'd like to wake up the volunteers here in Clark County, Washington, USA, and let them know that there's people making millions and millions of dollars, putting it in their pockets, and then they're just so happy and joyful here in our local corrupt government. It really pisses me off. Again, I will speak about the number 5.6 under New Business. There is nothing to read about the National County Government, and I'm asking you to pull that today, and we'll see how you do as far as calling what a citizen here in Clark County, Washington, over you. You're our servants, and I appreciate that. And I'll let you know this, it's okay to be a public servant.
Okay, thanks. Is, I think you said that was it? No others? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on then to Old Business, the minutes.
Time is approval of the minutes of March 20.
I'll second that.
Any further comments, corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. New Business, 5.1, Letter of Support for Kowalski Indian Tribe.
Good afternoon, councilors. For the record, Jordan Bogie, policy analyst. And so before you is a letter supporting the Kowalski tribe's request for some congressionally-directed spending to support the creation of a new public safety building. Right now, they are operating out of a couple of trailers. And, you know, as development continues, as they continue to develop up there, there's a need for a more permanent building. And so they are asking our congressional delegation for some funding to support that, and they have asked the county if we would write a letter in support of that. And so based on the language that the Kowalski tribe sent over to us, I have put together this letter indicating our support. And so today, would look for any thoughts you have, and then would request three thumbs up if you approve to send this to the tribe to include in their packet for support for this funding.
Super, and thanks for getting it to us earlier. I fully support this letter. I'm sorry to hear about the state of their condition right now. I'm hoping Congress, the Senate can help. Any concerns, questions?
I'm familiar, Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm familiar with their situation in those trailers, and therefore find them quite inappropriate for the level of protection that they offer the community now, and therefore am very supportive of this letter, and thank you for bringing it forward, Jordan.
I'm supportive as well. I know their needs have been increasing as their facility has increased. Thank you.
Definitely supportive as well, grateful however this came to us. This is the kind of community partnerships that we need to work on, wherever we can help our partners. I appreciate this coming forward.
Okay, unanimous support. How about 5.2?
Good afternoon, council. Leslie Lopez, Chief Civil Deputy. This is an item that I spoke with Chair Medvedji about to get this on the agenda. It says JEC District Court. What that means is Judicial Evaluation Committee for District Court. And with us today is we have Jessie Anderson, who is the Legal Director for Clark County Volunteer Lawyers Project. And she'll be talking about what this information is and sort of what we're asking for today.
Thank you, and welcome to come and do this presentation.
Thank you. As Leslie said, my name is Jessie Anderson. I am at the Clark County Volunteer Lawyers Program, and I am an active member of the Clark County Bar Association. And I'm part, I'm here today because I'm part of a work group for the Clark County Bar Association. There are several members who are doing some very introductory research into whether the formation of a judicial evaluation committee would be a useful service for Clark County. We know that District, or the county council is tasked with appointing district court judges if there's a vacancy between elections. And so what I'm here today for is wondering whether the council feels like getting a recommendation or a rating from a local bar association judicial evaluation committee would be a useful service for you all in making that determination. There are several bar associations throughout the state that do have judicial evaluation committees. Our current local bar association does not have one. Generally, the goal is to provide a qualification rating to the folks making the decision with the goal of evaluating the peer applicant. Since we are at the very beginning of what this process looks like, I don't have any details for you on what the, what this committee would look like, what the process would be, who would be the committee members. We're just very early trying to figure out if this is something that the council would find useful or not. My questions are twofold. Is that useful information for you? And also, our understanding right now is that when there is an opening, that the council advertises the position, accepts applications, does possibly a public interview or a forum. And so I wanted to make sure I knew if there was anything more that the council does so that we also have that information.
So I know if we get this going, that there will be more to come. And one of those points that I hadn't thought of until you just asked it is, we'll have to revisit our process, assuming that we do support this. And, you know, we'll have to time it with the evaluation process from this new committee. I fully support it. I think it's very much value-added. Having participated both as a recipient, as well as, you know, at least when judges pick commissioners, we kind of went through the same kind of evaluation process. So I've sat through it and seen the last county that I belong to, they, the local bar did develop their own evaluation committee in addition to the state evaluation committee. Of course, that was for Superior Court judges. So I think it's value-added. I think it would be important to flesh out the details of the process and then match it up with our own process. So let me turn it over to council questions, though, to see if there are questions and whether there's additional support.
This does sound like a value-added. I haven't been through this process or know what our current process is, but I think an independent review would be, would be a good thing. And if you could just keep this apprised as the process moves forward and developing exactly what that would be, that would be helpful.
Karen, you began to speak up.
Yes, thank you. I am not supportive at this time. I think it's a little bit premature. It might be very good to take a look at later when we know the answer to some of those questions that you posed that are unanswered at this time, including who's on this committee. That week's a big difference for how they come forward with their recommendations. Because we get a fairly thorough resume, a letter, and have the opportunity for interviewing them with our own questions of what we think is important for district court, we have a good window into what their qualifications are. And for me, at this time, that's adequate. So thank you for the offer. I just will have a thumbs down.
Okay, well, hold an open mind until you hear all the discussion. Glenn, did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would be interested in learning more. I don't know if I would be a yes right now. It just depends. There's a lot of things I want to understand better, like how large the need is, how often this occurs. I don't want to form a committee if this happens once a decade or, you know, something like that. So I'd like to understand that, and then, you know, the potential resource impact on the county of something like this. But the way I look at it is, the more information I can have in making decisions, the better. So I'm all for it if it makes sense in the scheme of things.
Okay, so let me just comment on kind of the last, at least one aspect of the last two comments I heard. So in order to, if we give a thumbs up, then they'll start working on who would be members, how will they conduct their own evaluations? They'll start fleshing out the details of what it would look like. And what it adds to us beyond a resume and interview is basically a peer evaluation. You know, it's a community of lawyers that know the candidates that can give you some additional background, which would be pretty valuable, because most of us here are not in the courts. You know, we're not answering pleadings. We don't know the reputations of lawyers. You don't get reputations out of a resume. And of all the committees and boards that we appoint people to, we don't do any background checks. We don't have the time and ability. This is all a volunteer effort, so as far as commitment of resources, it's their time, and it's all volunteered. So anyway, maybe we need to get a better framework, because I'm hearing two yes, one maybe, and then one no, which doesn't make us move forward. We're missing one counselor today. So what I would recommend is maybe fleshing it out a little bit more, telling us what it would look like, what your process would look like. I remain fully supportive, and maybe with a little bit more detail, we can win the heart and mind of another counselor. And then Michelle Belkot didn't participate today at all, so...
All right, I think that sounds great. I think we would be more than happy to come back when we've got some structure surrounding it to get some more information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to 5.3. I see George coming back.
Good afternoon, council. Jordan Bogie again. For the record, I have four proclamations for your consideration today that I'll be going through, looking for thumbs up or down, whether or not you support these. So the first one that is on your screen right now is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is April. That comes to us from the Children's Justice Center, and they would like it read on April 2nd. And so presented here for your consideration, and any thoughts and thumbs up here or down.
Any questions or concerns? What say you, Karen? We've got three thumbs up on the dais and a fourth. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, council. The second proclamation that I have for your consideration today is Peace Officers Memorial Day. This comes to us from the Clark County Sheriff's Office. They would like it to be read on May 22nd. And so you can see the text that is up here on the screen. This was given to us by the sheriff's office.
I'm sorry, Karen. Karen, we had three thumbs up, four thumbs up. There you go. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, councilors. The third proclamation that I have for you today comes to us from the Fort Vancouver Regional Library, and it is for National Volunteer Week, which is April 21st through the 27th, my apologies. And that would be read probably on the 23rd of April during National Volunteer Week. This is one I believe we've done in the past, and we would have someone from the Fort Vancouver Regional Library here to accept that.
All right, once again, universal, we have four thumbs up.
Wonderful. Thank you, councilors. And the final one that I have for you today is National County Government Month. And you can see it up on the screen there. I believe this is one that we've done in the past as well. April is also National County Government Month. And I think we have a little bit of flexibility on when exactly we would have this read. And the only other consideration beyond whether or not we would like to approve this proclamation is, right now, I don't know who from the county is the appropriate person to accept the proclamation on behalf of the county for National County Government Month. So that's my only other consideration for us today.
So just kind of tagging on one of the comments that was earlier, was this posted and available online or not? And is there a requirement to have the proclamation posted online before we give a thumbs up?
I don't know if there's a requirement, but it does appear that the link is not correct online.
So it was posted right before the meeting?
Yes, I had a wrong link initially.
Would have a little bit more gravement if we actually got the whole week off. Kristen liked that idea. So what would the council like to do?
I'm supportive, and I'm not sure if maybe one of us could read it and someone else on the council could accept it and make some comments. I'm not sure how that works.
And we can, it's usually about the employees. We, sorry, we haven't, we didn't do it last year, I don't believe, and possibly the year before. So usually in history, the chair or somebody would read it, and then a county employee would accept it on behalf of all county employees and recognizing the work that they do in county government.
That sounds more appropriate.
Yeah, and that, I was kind of going to ask questions along the same line, but do we have a county employee of the year, or county employee of the month, or no, nothing like that? How many unions do we have?
We have 13 unions.
Okay. So we'll leave it, I support reading it, and we'll have to figure out who is the recipient, and we can leave that up to the executive branch. What do you think?
Yeah, I agree.
What do you think, Karen? Okay, thumbs up?
Sounds good.
Super.
Wonderful. Thank you, councilors. Appreciate it.
All right, so moving right along to counselor reports. Moving further along.
Actually, I...
We do have one?
I have a little report. I had sent out some information a while back related to the Porta Ridgefield and the, their proposed tax increment financing area. I attended the Fort Creek Neighborhood Association last week, and they made a presentation. So I sent that out to everyone to take a look at. But just a cursory look at this, one of the areas that's proposed, it's a large area, 179th and I-5, and it will have, as they have estimated, an impact of $16.1 million impact to our fund over the next 25 years. So I don't know if they have contacted us to discuss that, or I just felt like people should be aware that this is coming our way. And the decision is going to be made fairly quickly on April 10th at their, at the Port's Board Meeting.
So I had that very question with Mark Gasway early on when we first, I first saw it in the newspaper, and I said, "Is this decrement the county's resources?" And the answer was, "Yes." And I said, "Well, how much?" And it basically was, "We don't know yet." So where did that figure come from, from just one tax district?
Well, it would be our road fund and the legacy land, the conservation futures, and our general fund. It was, I believe they worked with a consultant who develops these numbers for all the, and it has a listing of all the junior taxing districts and the impact it would have on them.
Thank you for that. I think that's really important and that we...
Yeah.
...engage a little bit more with the city to find out...
Yeah, our, it's the Port, Porta Ridgefield, yeah. So the Porta Ridgefield leadership and the consultant did...
The Port, sorry.
Yeah, they met with our finance team as well as Public Works and other entities. I will get an update from them to see if any dollar amount was shared during that meeting and bring that back to council, hopefully next week, so, or even sooner by email, just so that you're aware before their April 10th decision.
Okay, super. And I apologize for saying the city, not the port. So other counselor reports? Glenn?
Yep, real quickly, we, I think it was this last week, I'm pretty sure, we finished scoring the opioid applications. We're still working through, and we're going to be having some interviews and things. The process is still moving forward, just to update on that. And then the next is, I think there was an email sent around, but I've got two committee meetings at the same time today, and still hoping to find a volunteer to take, yeah, Impact, which starts at 5:00 this evening. So if anybody's able to do that, please let me know, or Kristen.
Well, so I'm going to assume Michelle's not available, since she's missed today. Karen? I, I'm not going to volunteer, because I've got other meetings after this one, after our executive, and I've got a lot conflicting at home right now. Is anyone else available? Oh, the pressure's on. You wanted to do it? Okay. Karen, are you volunteering?
No, I'm sorry. I'm not available either.
No pressure, Sue.
I did look at the agenda, and it would be of interest if to compare, they're going through their comprehensive plan for their Portland metro region. It might be interesting in that respect, but I'm not volunteering.
Okay, thank you. Other counselor reports? Karen, did you have any?
Not today.
Okay, thank you. And I did, and Michelle's not here, and I know she was really asking the question. I saw the response from RTC on the, I think, the Impact seat. And I, so I'm totally confused, because I'm hearing something different from his response as to what we were told last year. And at RTC, the county position was, "We'll give up the seat for a year, and every year reconsider it." So I'm not sure where that sits, because I'm not hearing that from RTC now. Jordan?
Hey, council, Jordan Bogie again. So related to that RTC seat, if you, if you look at the bylaws, the way that they are written for that group, basically at that, at the December meeting, you know, before a year starts, they, you nominate a slate of folks to be on... a year starts, they, you nominate a slate of folks to be on the board, and I think they're from the, from the City of Vancouver, from CTRAN, from the county, and there's one more that I'm not remembering. But essentially, what they did is, there's a, there's a, Sean was the appointed member, and then the alternate was the deputy director. And so, since Sean is leaving, they're moving the CTRAN, they're moving the alternate. Now she's going to be in Sean's seat, and then they're going to replace the alternate with someone else from CTRAN, essentially, instead of, I think our request had been to say, "Can you take CTRAN off and make that one of the county councillors' seats?", which you could do at the annual meeting, but basically, that the way that the bylaws are written is such that, they don't anticipate a mid-year change, essentially, and so they're, it seems like they just want to stick with the status quo, basically, and just slot another, basically move the CTRAN folks up.
And that's in accordance with the bylaws.
That's, that's correct. I, that's how they're written.
Yeah, so I can see the, I understand the interim change, because we had a change of director of CTRAN. That makes sense. But I just didn't want it to get lost, that on an annual basis, basically, it was the county that was providing the nomination, that the RTC was then putting in place. So I guess we're just not there yet. If anyone has any other concerns, I guess we can take it up in sidebars, but thank you for that clarification.
Just a comment here. I think it would be nice if they labeled the current person that they're moving up into that slot as interim, so that it is clear that come December, per the bylaws, another permanent member would be chosen.
That's a great idea, Karen. Thank you. Any other councillor reports?
I would say just a suggestion, for those of you on RTC, you may want to pull up the bylaws, and encourage that discussion and update as necessary, because it doesn't, it sounds like how they're responding is in accordance with the bylaws. So if we want something different, I would encourage you all to bring that up at your meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move from councillor reports to work session requests.
There are none today.
Policy updates.
All right, council, Jordan Bogie here. Again, just a few updates for, I wanted to just follow up on the conversation I teed up last week about our legislative priorities. And so, the State Association of Counties has asked that we share with them any priorities that we would want to have WASAC pursue during the next legislative session with them by the 19th of April. And so, there are a few items that I think might fit the bill for us. And then, I wanted to also just kind of start the conversation a little bit about our own county legislative priorities for the, for the next session. I think this is something we're going to iterate on over the next few months. You know, I'd like to have conversations here. My plan is to reach out to each of the department heads for their priorities, and so that we know what folks in the county are hoping to do. Josh and Annika are hoping to come down and chat with the council. I think they're aiming for the 17th of April. And so, would like to have that conversation with them about some, you know, how to strategize, how to prioritize, how to best pursue some of these goals as well. And so, when I'm thinking about what we would like to work with WASAC around, some of the things that I think might be our highest priority are related to, you know, jail capital funding. I think that's going to be a big one. I know, at least Spokane County is certainly in a very similar position to where we're at. I think there may be some other counties who are looking to do jail remodels or updates as well, since many of them were built in the same kind of time period. So that's one that I might look and say, that that's something that we could do better working with the association. On indigent defense, obviously, going to be a major issue, an item of conversation coming up through the next year and the next session. And so, that's, that's an item that I, that I think that we'd want to work with the other counties on, since we're all really in the same boat together. And then, potentially, you know, some transportation issues. You know, I know we've done some efforts around rail funding and improvements of the railroad, if there are other counties that are interested in moving into any kind of infrastructure incentives or things like that. So those are the three that I really saw as potential items that, that might make sense to work with the association on. But I would welcome any, any thoughts that you have, looking for some policy guidance, and also aiming, just to give you the sense of the timeline, probably by the second week of April, try to have these tightened up, so that I can send these out to WASAC for their consideration.
Super. Thanks for that report. The only comment I would make is, you know, for capital, capital jail discussion has been going on now for a couple of sessions. And it, what I've watched in some of these budgeting capital programming, it, maybe the third legislative session will be a charm. I mean, there's more and more people talking about it each session, and it's certainly needed. So, I encourage all councillors to send Jordan your ideas. Do, does anyone have any right now that they'd like to share?
I don't have anything specific, but I have been thinking about if there are smaller packages, like the funding that we received for Vancouver Lake and for Lactamas Lake, if there's something in the $300,000, or if there's some discrete projects that we could promote to our delegation. I think they look for ways that they can help out, and if we can find something compelling, I'd encourage us to do that.
I absolutely concur with that. Great idea. Glenn, anything?
Somewhat related, but somewhat unrelated, the email that I just forwarded to you. So, you got, did we all, I don't know if we all got it, it's from...
It's from the Office of Public Defense. They are having a couple of listening sessions as the OPD works on their budget coming up, like the end of April, and then another one in, in mid-May. So thank you, councillor Young, because I had not been looped into that. Councillor Young sent me an email highlighting those listening sessions, and so, I think we're thinking about having a, having a presence there, and wanting to think through what our ask might be, as the Office of Public Defense of the state is putting together their budget. And I'm sure there will be other counties who are also saying, "With these new standards, you know, we're not going to be able to afford, you know, the number of folks that we would need to comply." And so, I think generally, that's going to be a theme throughout. I also would be curious if we have any other specific asks, either related to indigent defense, or perhaps other items related to public defense that, that we might be able to request as they're putting their budget together. That would be helpful for the county.
And I had brought it up before, for unrepresented litigants is a problem for the courts, as well as for a guardian ad litem program. I mean, there's a lot of state funding that should be invested in this area. I did send that invite to Amber as well, and I forwarded it to Kristen to put me on for the May date. I think there's two different dates. So I would encourage, I don't know exactly if they're going to be listening to us, or we're listening to them. That was my, you know, I just skimmed the invite. I didn't know exactly what kind of process they had involved. But, and if you can get any more details on that, that would be great. But I, but I do hope to participate on whatever level they allow.
I don't think I received that, so, but I would be interested.
I will connect with Katrina, the deputy director for OPD, to talk through what they're looking for. I think it looks like it is interactive, so I'm hopeful that it's something that we can bring our feedback for the county forward to what our concerns are for the office. So I'll connect with her, and then I'll loop Jordan in, and we can get more information on that. I'm being told I did receive it. Okay.
So, just finishing up, I'd be happy to attend one or both, or whatever, whatever, I mean, whatever's best. You know, if we want just one councillor going and representing the county, that's fine. But if we think more there, would be there, I'm happy to attend as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor.
I did send it to you.
So if, yeah, if any councillor is planning on attending, please let Kristen know, so that we can notice it appropriately. And no decisions can be made, but certainly, individual feedback is welcome.
Further policy updates?
So, the only other thing that I just want to mention here, some other priorities, just for the county, not necessarily related to WASAC, some things that I'm looking at are transportation-related, and so those are things like, you know, we pursued funding for a third corridor visioning study. That did not come through in this session, but that's something we can certainly carry forward. Again, similar to the rail improvement efforts, that, that bill did not pass either for those incentives. Thinking about some other specific projects, I don't believe the Ridgefield I-5 connector project was funded, so I, I think that that is something that we're probably going to want to continue support for. I'm sure the Ridgefield will be continuing to pursue that. I know the Camas Slough Bridge is in need of repair, and that's something that's an RTC priority as well. There are certainly going to be some, some other items, so I've got those on my radar. Looking at lake management, as we talked about this morning, we had a last-minute request this last session, related to asking for a proviso around supporting carp removal from the lake. That's something that maybe with a little bit more time, if there was interest, we could pursue. Again, you know, now that we are aware that the Flushing Channel is not, at Lake Vancouver, is, is not, was not constructed by the Army Corps of Engineers, we'll need to think about how we want to pursue that, since, since those funding streams are going to be a little bit different. I'm sure we're going to want to continue collaborating with CAMAS on Lactamas Lake, and seeing how we can support funding at the state level for management there. I have another item on here related to restoring funding for postage, for items on the ballot. I know that that used to be the case, and that some of the, some of those funding streams have changed, and the way that the state supports elections has changed, so that can be something, if we're interested in pursuing. I know Public Health was interested in updating the child fatality statute, and that was the one item out of WASALFO, so that was the Washington Association of Public Health Officers. That was the one priority of theirs that did not pass this last session, so I don't know if we want to support that again. And then, the final item that I had on my list here today was Heritage Farm, and supporting that both through agricultural grants, but then also working on it as a historical location, and trying to access funding streams related to historical preservation, as well as agriculture. And so, so those are the items that I've got. I've emailed council this list, so just wanted to give an opportunity for folks to react to any of this. I'm certainly happy to put together the list in a different format, if that would be helpful, but just wanted to start, start the conversation now, so that we can start thinking about these priorities and where we want to go.
Thank you. It's a great list. Any, Chair, let's write off?
Chair, just one...
Yes, go ahead, Glenn.
With regard to the carp, I had spoken with one member of friends of Vancouver Lake, and they had mentioned that there is, and I don't know if the times pass, I don't know where we're at in that, but I think Fish and Wildlife was looking at requiring license to fish for carp. And the thought is, it is an invasive species, why would we want to put a barrier up to people fishing it? And so I think, if you could, I don't know if you already are aware of that, or if you could look into that a little bit, and perhaps, you know, we look at supporting something with that, because it, to me, it doesn't make sense. Why would we require a license to get rid, to fish something that we want to get rid of? So, yeah, just something to keep on the...
Okay, so, that concludes your presentation.
It does.
Thank you so much.
I do have one, just additional policy item, that will be coming back to council, but it's regarding Camp Bonneville, and our advisory group that council has directed to review what cleanup has been done, and also determine what cleanup still needs to be done. The group has been struggling a little bit getting the work done, so I just wanted to give council a heads up, that Amber and I and the staff are evaluating that. We still need to get the work done, but we may need to pivot on, to make sure that it gets done, and gets done timely. So, this may be coming back to council soon, just to, still meeting that priority, but it may look different than it does now.
Okay, thank you for that. Regarding the executive session, is there any action anticipated? No action anticipated. So we have 19.1, RCW 42.30, .110, for N1, for NB, for approximately 10 minutes. I've got 146 right now. Why don't we start at 150, so we'll come back, or hopefully come back right at 2:00. Okay, so we'll adjourn from this meeting and go into executive session. We are back from executive session with our lawyers, and the full council is back. We're now in session to adjourn. Have a great afternoon.